And you are live.
Okay, we're back in full in open session. And where do we begin?
Considering it's a workshop, there's a couple of different ways that you all could could go about this. You can either start at the top and work your way down, or if individual members have areas that you've already highlighted that you want to work on. I believe this is a comprehensive review of the personnel policy, so possibly just starting at the top, not necessarily trying to solve all of our problems today, but understanding which sections you want to work on and kind of allocating or getting a general sense of maybe what you want as an end goal for that section, and then breaking up, you know, who works on what, and then reconvening with some suggestions, some edits and things like that at a future date.
I guess. When I looked at what triggers this, it's what are the, what are the new things that need to be added to the policy? What are the old things that were wrong or need to be corrected? And I don't, I don't think that's an exhaustive list.
No, I mean, I've got.
I think, I think it's the new leave law, the dental insurance, the healthcare buyout. And, you know, one of my things that I thought of is do we need to have language in there about domestic partner coverage for things? And, or does the law take care of that? And even with the new leave law, do we, do we need to say anything other than in the appropriate place? We say that the South, Town of South Thomaston conforms to the MRS blah, 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 whatever it is. So, I don't know. Thoughts from Jen and John? Do we want to crawl through this entire policy?
Um, well, I, I think we definitely need to amend it to accommodate the leave law. I, I don't know that we need to claw through the entire policy. But I do think we need to amend it for that. I, the dental is already done, I believe.
Correct.
In a draft, yes.
Pardon?
In draft, yes.
We approved it.
Yeah, but we haven't changed the policy yet.
It's in mine, the one I picked up yesterday.
Yep, the one with the date of 12/15 at the top and then the supplemental history, both reflect the December 15th change to dental insurance.
Okay, well, again, that's assuming, that's assuming the document you changed was the current document. That's where I'm being questioned.
That's the other thing I'm confused about.
Yep, so I, you know, inherited a personnel policy. The one change that I've been on board for with you all was that change to the health benefits buyout and allowing it to be kind of filtered in instead of one lump sum. That change that you all made earlier in this year is also reflected in the one marked 12/15. So unless there was something wrong with the original personnel policy that I got, I believe that to be current and the one marked 12/15 has both the changes to the health benefits and the dental insurance reflected in them.
Okay.
Well, where, where is it? The one I got yesterday is not marked 12/15. I'm already confused.
So last.
Oh, on the last page? No?
Yep, so I sent out at 4:31 an email to you three. It had the personnel policy history marked 12/15/2020 and then the personnel policy amendment 12/15/2020.
Okay, Owen, let's, let's look at the last page of the document that you edited, the one that has our signature block on it. And then go up to the last paragraph, which is Article 20, effective dates. And I'm looking for a date in there that would reflect the front page on the town personnel policy where it says it was amended on December 13th, 2016. And I don't see that date anywhere in there.
No, I mean, at the bottom, those effective, I'm looking at the bottom. I have an April 26th, 2016 data on there, but I don't have.
Yep, and that, and that, that date even confuses me because, again, if I look at the front page of our document right now, the cover page, which has all the amendments listed on it. The last two on mine show an amendment of May 1st, 2016 and an amendment of December 13th, 2016.
And which, where did you get that document? That's not the one that I sent out last night, is it, sir?
No, no, that's, that's been kind of my issue the whole time we've been doing this is that I don't think you're working from the most current document. Let me, let me, I don't know if I can show this because I, but this is what I'm looking at. This document. Can you see it?
Yep, yep, yep.
You know, it's basically, it says, in reverse, I guess. It says Town of South Thomaston Personnel Policy. And on the bottom, it has amendments.
Yep.
And you see the dates of the last two amendments?
I do.
Okay, those are not on your list of what you amended at all.
No, can I, let me just show you all something real quick if I could share my screen. So this is our personnel policy file within the, within the server.
Can't read it.
Yeah, I, so I just wanted to show you, this is where I go to grab all of my information.
Yep.
Yep, and so I have, you know, some documents, the history from 4/26/16. This was the February 18th, 2020 change that we did. Here's a December 13th, 2016 personnel policy.
That's the one that, December 13th, 2016 is my baseline document. Because that's the first one that I ever had as a member of this committee.
That's correct.
And that's the one when I got reelected, when I got reelected, or when I got elected, I should say. When I went in and picked it up, that's the one Chelsea gave me, which I still have.
Okay, and.
I assume was the current one, but I guess it isn't. I don't know.
Yeah, didn't reflect the, the, the change to the healthcare buyout.
That's correct.
Now, that was the only thing that was missing from that doc, that series of amendments until recently, when the, the one that we voted on a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, but, but that document is different than the one that Owen sent out a while back. I told you, I went through just a couple of pages and found differences right off the bat.
Yep, you're right on point, John. This is the, this is the last page of the one I'm talking about that has that December 13th, 2016 date. Page we signed.
Yep.
See the signature?
Yep.
See the date at the, below the signatures? Can you see those?
Hang on, Jan, where are you?
I'm on the last page where our signatures are.
Page nine?
Yes.
Yeah, and that shows December 16th, 2016.
Yep, and, and look above that in that paragraph that shows all the amendments.
Yeah.
And you're also going to see 1 May, 2016.
Yeah, I see that.
Okay, now, now go back to Owen's and see if you can find either of those dates on the one that Owen sent out.
Yep.
Right, and that's the problem I'm having is I, yeah.
Okay, so I believe, gentlemen, that, so my screen share is still up?
Yep.
Okay, so the document that you all are talking about is the document that we're looking at right now. It has the last effective date is that December 13th, 2016. So I'm sure at some point in time I somehow royally screwed this up. But if, can we all agree that December 13th, 2016 was the last time the policy was amended before we did our February of 2020 amendment? And then for the health benefits buyout? And then we amended it one additional time for the dental, so.
So, so that's correct.
Okay, so if I made those.
No, it's not correct.
No, it's not.
Because what I'm trying to figure out is if I change this document that we all are looking at from the 2016 where we knew is the last time it was good.
I'm not looking at a document. Do you, are you, you think you're showing a document?
Oh, I thought my, I thought I was sharing the screen.
You are.
You're just sharing the file.
Yeah, so.
Open that document and then I'll, then I'll be able to maybe answer more of your question. The reason I say it's not correct is because the amendment that we made after this date, after the December 13th, 2016, were made to the wrong base document.
Yep.
So, the health issue and the other things that we did don't reflect the base document. So you've got to start with the December 13th, 2016 document and then amend it for the more recent ones.
You and I, you and I are on the same page, yeah.
Okay, and, and I'm okay, I'm, I'm more than willing to take this on, but I needed a head nod from everybody that we had an agreement on what the base document is because if we keep making changes to these other documents, we're not getting there because we're, we're changing the wrong document.
Yeah, can I make a suggestion about that file structure, Owen?
Yes.
That you create a subfolder called Archive. And, and you put art, all the, all the stuff that's not, that's old and obsolete in that archive file. And the first thing that should show up is being the current personnel policy is December 13th, 2016 until we actually incorporate the two amendments that we voted on.
I, I agree with that and thank you all for this. So what I would offer just as a suggestion so that we could utilize some of this time today, if we believe that the December 13th, 2016 document that I'm sharing right now.
No, you're not sharing it. I'd like to see it.
Yeah, open the document.
This is the document.
No, you're sure, sharing the file, not the document. It's on a list of files. It's not showing the document.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So I toggle around and I thought that the screen share was keeping up with that. I apologize. Okay. Here we go. Thank you for that. I'm wondering, okay, so.
There you go.
Yeah.
Show me the.
Yep, absolutely. Because I think, so down here, December 13th, 2016.
Okay, and you have an unsigned copy.
Yes, this was the file and then they printed it off. There's this scanned PDF that I have open in a different tab that has that cover sheet as well with the amendments listed on that cover page, but this is just a working document.
Okay, so in a PDF, going back to what Walter said about archiving, PDF form, you should have this document, you know, with, with the signatures. So that when you print it out for people like John, you're printing out the signed copy. Yep, okay, now I believe that the one we're looking at is the more recent base document, I would call it.
Oh, this PDF.
If we make the changes to that related, you know, that we've made over the last year or two, then, then we'll be up to date.
So, yeah, so that, so just so I understand, so the document I got from Chelsea was the right document.
If, if this is it, John, is this the one you got?
Yeah, that's it. I got a signed copy, signed December 13th, like 2016.
It was the right document but for the February change to the health benefits.
Right.
Yes.
It does not contain that amendment.
Well, yeah, it was missing, it was missing two up, well, it was missing one update. I got it. Now it's missing two updates.
Right.
Yep, and so what, what I believe.
That's what I was so confused about because when, when I was looking at the one you sent me electronically, it didn't match up with this in several other areas, so, but I get it now.
So then how does this sound? My very first task when we're done with all of this is taking that December 13th, 2016, incorporating the two amendments that have been made in 2020, sending that back out to you all, but for the remainder of this workshop, we could use that December 13th, 2016. Know that there are two specific areas that haven't been changed, but we can still review other aspects because all the other aspects are current.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
Okay.
And when you say, when, Owen, when you say you're going to amend the policy, you need to amend the history as well. That's important.
Yeah, and I, I did that, but, you know, based on history, there's a chance that I amended the wrong historical, you know, history segment too. So I'll confirm both of those and make sure that both of those documents are good. And then you all will have those before the end of the day today. I will not, unless you want me to, incorporate any changes that we do right now in this meeting. I guess that's a, that's a process question. Do you want me to be tracking along with track changes on that December 13th, 2016 as we work through this workshop?
I, I think that could get complicated, but.
I think so too. What I'd really like to do, Owen, is get, get a document that's current. So I'd like to take this 2016 December document, make the already approved changes to it as you proposed, and then have a document that we work from to amend further if we have other amendments.
You don't, we can, since we're all gathered, we can't work on some of the other issues?
Well, that was kind of what I was suggesting, or maybe, maybe what could be done is you all have, or at least, you know, Jan has, December 13th, 2016. We know that's good. We know there are two specific aspects in that that need to be amended. I can take that 2016 document and incorporate the two amendments in while you all are discussing. So I'll put myself on mute so you can't hear me clicking away. If you need me for anything, just holler. But do you, do you gentlemen want to discuss the other aspects while I do that? So you can then, by the conclusion of this meeting, have the amended document in your hands and everyone can confirm that's a good document for going forward. But Jan or others took notes during the workshop on any potential changes in the future?
I, you know, I heard Jan volunteer to do those two updates and I prefer that.
Well, let me, let me again make sure that I'm looking at the right documents. The two amendments that have already been approved, one was related to the healthcare buyouts and one is related to the dental insurance.
Yeah.
Am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I have both of those then in their draft form that I could incorporate into the 2016 document. And we can still talk about things beyond that if you'd like.
Yeah, I'd like to. I've set aside some time for this this morning and.
So Owen, if, do me a favor, please, and send me that December 26th, that December 13th, 2016 document that we just looked at in both the Word form, which you had, which is unsigned, and then the PDF file, which is signed.
And then, yep, and the PDF one, just so you know, also has the, the history as of that December 13th, 2016 below it, and then it has job descriptions as well.
Right, that's a part of the document.
Yep, and then as you're, as you're doing your, I'm sorry, sir, I didn't hear you.
Each 10 of the document of the 2016 document is the history of amendments.
Yes.
And on mine, that history stops.
December 13th, 2016.
Yep, December 13th, 2016. And then it also includes job descriptions.
Yep.
As appendices. And it also includes a copy of the, the form that we're doing for evaluations as Appendix A. Appendix A and then B starts job description.
Yep.
Okay, okay.
And, and then, sir, while you're, when you're going about to do this, the documents that I sent out last night, the Personnel Policy Amendment one might not be right. That might be a nefarious document.
I don't want to use either one of those because they're not right.
All I was going to say was on that history, the two portions at the bottom are the, the changes that we made in 2020. So just everything past, you know, before that, the history might be a little wonky on that, but at least the last two amendments are included in that history. So if you wanted to look at them, they're there.
Okay.
So I'm going to throw away all this other stuff I got.
You'd be wise to do that.
Except for this one document. I actually feel better about this because the document that was being passed out to employers was the correct document.
Yeah. Almost correct, anyway.
Purely, purely by accident, but.
Almost correct. Not a couple of the most recent amendments.
Oh, yeah, but the health insurance buyout only applies to three people.
Yep.
Or three physicians.
Yep, okay.
Okay, so can we dig into it?
Sure.
As far as I'm concerned, you can.
Well, I, I'll start. I, I think everywhere in the document, we should change the Board of Selectment to the Select Board. Okay.
Okay.
Do folks agree with that or?
Yeah. That's a, yeah.
Other than that, I have no issue with Article 1.
Article 1, neither do I.
I just tried to send that to you. It bounced back because the 2016 was in doc, not docx. So I'll fix that and send it to you.
And some of the comments that I have, I may have, I may be criticizing myself, so. So bear, don't be surprised, but um, we have a section on. Sorry. Thought we had a section on, no, I guess we don't. So I'm looking at. Article 2, I'm fine with A. And B.
Is this, is this helpful?
Not for me. I can't.
Oh, no.
It's too small.
Yeah, no, you got it in front of us, I think.
Okay, and I did just send both those documents again. Now it is a docx, so you should have both the PDF with all of the attachments plus the December 2016 Word version that has all of the changes but for the, the February health benefits and the December dental.
Looks like I do, Owen. Just opened it.
I am, I'm fine with D and E.
Yeah, Owen, how, how, how do we get verification that department heads have actually done the CHRI?
So my understanding is that used to go through this office in Terry and then it's not an overly complicated thing to do. So Brian has kind of taken over doing that for his folks and Amy as well. I haven't been asked to perform that for folks. We did some, something with drivers and we needed to do background checks. I reached out to another municipality and helped Brian get into a system. So I believe that's done, but the bulk of the hiring is done with the bigger offices with some of their, you know, firefighters and per diems. We don't do that often with my two employees, nor is there a huge need sometimes because they're not driving vehicles. That's about, that's about what I know on, on that front.
All right, I'll, I, I remember, I remember walking Brian through how to do it, so.
If that's the case, then if we're not authorizing these, then we should strike that line, last line says the Board of Selectmen may authorize such reviews. I mean, I don't feel a need to authorize them. And it does say may be reviewed as a condition of employment.
Yeah, that was intentional.
Huh?
The, the, the may was intentional, I know.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that. I don't think.
The, the last thing that I heard was there was a handful of folks that were potentially going to get hired and there was possibly some concerns about one of them because they weren't overly well-known. And yet it became a difficult, well, do we run background check just on one of the three because we think some things are amiss? Or do we run background checks for everyone so that we keep it equitable for all new hires? And I believe the determination was we should be equitable for everyone and not pick and choose who we think we have concerns on. So I, I think that they're going to be trying to do these for anyone that might potentially drive a vehicle. But this, these are, these are Brian and Amy questions.
Okay.
That I will take notes on and ask them.
Well, I, it, it strikes me that we perhaps should delete the whole second sentence. If we're going to turn this over to certain department heads, I mean, I completely agree with you. You, you don't want to do it in a discriminatory manner, but I think that's up to the department heads to manage that. But if we're not going to be involved in authorizing these, which kind of doesn't make a lot of sense to me given that we sometimes don't meet for two weeks or.
Well, you all do have that final hiring authority, so.
That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about it says that upon recommendation from the town, Department Head of Town Administration, the Board may authorize such reviews. We're not doing that currently and I don't know that we need to.
No, I don't, I, I, I agree because I think when this first came up and John, Jan, correct me if I'm wrong, we basically told them to do it. So we gave them blanket authorization.
Yeah, I think we did. I'm not sure why we worded it that way.
Well, I would suggest that we strike that whole second sentence.
Okay.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Good with E. I'm with, with, I have a question on F.
Sorry.
Um, the, in, in the SOPs that Amy had, Jan?
Yep.
She had a section in there that was different from this.
Yep.
Um. And I just think we need to be conscious of that. I mean, we might want to look at what she had in there and perhaps update this section, perhaps, based on what she had. Um, based on what she had in there. And and one thing that struck me, for example, is I think in her if I recall, in her SOP, it said anybody who was caught stealing could be um immediately um placed on administrative leave and then immediately terminated. Didn't have to go through an incremental process. This says that's true if you steal town property. But if you're an ambulance worker and you go into Walter's house and steal, it wouldn't apply. So I I just think we we number one might want to strike town property.
It it does say the beginning of that sentence examples. I'm not sure it just.
I understand, but I I I understand, but the the what we're trying to do here is make it as clear as possible. So I just, uh, I would, I think we should bump it up against what Amy had. I think she lifted that from somewhere and perhaps we should look at, and I really haven't had time to, a couple of the other um policies, because this is probably the most important thing in this policy is this paragraph right here. Uh, to my mind. Um. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't personally, once we're done, I wouldn't mind having um even maybe even having Kristen just take a swipe at at a look at this paragraph, just this paragraph, not the whole thing. Uh, because to my mind, this is the most important thing in here.
Okay. And just so you know, I've I'm still holding that ambulance policy SOP. Uh, filled after this review because of the same things that you talked about where I wanted to refer the ambulance SOP back to this policy. But when it got so confusing what this policy was, I stopped.
Yeah, okay. And then in G, it refers to D above. I think it should refer to.
There you go. Have a good one.
I'm sorry, you broke up, John.
In G, it says as outlined in D above. Well, D above is now the main criminal history records check. It's not the discipline.
Yeah, we need to change that.
Yeah. I I actually, truth be known, I I almost think the discipline termination should be a separate article. It's kind of stuck in the middle of these um sort of procedural things in an awkward spot, but.
And it should probably go right before the um appeals or um.
Why there?
Well, whatever. I I I don't know that we need to decide that, but I just think it.
Well, there's a grievance process and tip typically if there's disciplinary grievance would fall right after and the grievances um further down in the policy.
Yeah.
So did I have it correct? Um, item G under Article Two, you wanted the reference to be for um F, not D.
Well, whatever F ends up being.
Right.
Yep. Paragraph that referred.
Want me to just keep going?
Yep. Yeah.
Um. Uh, H, I'm fine with. I don't know too much about that, but I I think from what the little I know, I think that's fine. Uh.
When you are all set with your, thank you.
Do you have anything with I?
I I have no issue with I.
Yeah, I I do. I wrote in mind that we should make the additional words that that employee performance reviews, appendix A will be completed on an annual basis unless otherwise warranted. A copy will be placed in the in employees' personnel record.
Uh, yes.
So that that's the that was the ad.
Okay, that's that's fine. Should be anyways. Yeah, but. Doesn't hurt to put it in there.
But we found in historically, they were not being.
Oh.
I have Brian's as a matter of fact. I haven't uh turned it over to get put in there, so. But it's sitting right in my inbox box.
Okay, equal opportunity employer. I I I don't know if that's up to date or not. But that's something easy to check, I would think.
Oh, just if they've if they've added any additional.
Yeah.
Language in there.
Yeah, I mean.
I'll make a note on that.
I think four is seems to be okay.
I'll um I'll just note, so um the Georgia's River Shellfish Warden. If you scrolled all the way down to the bottom of this policy, it it further explains the Shellfish Warden. It calls the Shellfish Warden a department head, which is fine. Um, I just think then this description of the Shellfish Warden shouldn't be in employee classification. It should be down in department head or or duties. Because it kind of lays out who the department heads are in that department and duty section. Um, but then and then there's further cleanup at that all the way at the bottom of the document, Shellfish Warden stuff, but we can get there later. It references weird aspects of this document, but specific to employee classification. Would you want to delete or do something with that Georgia's River Shellfish and just plug them in as a department head in the following section?
I don't, um. Does the Shellfish Warden have the duties and responsibilities that are listed there for a department head?
I don't, I was just gonna ask, why do they have to be department heads?
That's just how our our policy, if you scroll down to page nine and you look at Article 20, the first line says be considered a department head. But it does say under Article 10, but Article 10's vacation time.
Yeah, we're not uh we're not there yet.
No, and but I'm just saying another spot does reference it as a department head. That's why I got that whole maybe they should be in department heads because it's already, it says that in a different part of the document.
Yeah, I um. I don't know. This was put in because when it was our turn to employ the warden, uh, the benefit package that the warden got was far different from um, you know, that he had been receiving for several years when when he was an employer, but Warren, I think it was had him for several years before we did. And when he came to us, basically, they said, we're not gonna, you know, you need to provide him what he's been getting. Um, and so we had to amend the policy for that particular position. He only worked for us for a year, but he could come back. He or she could come back again.
Next year, I think.
So I think it's important to keep it in there. I don't quite know why it says he was a department head. Um. But.
Yeah, and that was why I I provided you all, you know, it was one so that you could see what other towns were doing for personnel policies. But I specifically chose the other towns that we're in the collective with so that you could see that um we do reference information about the Shellfish Warden that other towns as part of the collective do not. And so once we got down to the bottom, I was gonna ask the question of do you want this very specific language about all these health benefits and coverage and percentages? Or did you simply want to say there's a shellfish cooperative and and they have their own board of directors and they get health coverage and just be more vague about it? Um, because there are discrepancies within the the five towns as to how the Shellfish Warden is referenced.
But I think it's um. Are there differences in the benefits and hours and and things like that? Or are they common across the everybody in the collective?
No, for example, St. George and Thomaston do not even reference the Shellfish Warden at all in their policy.
Okay, well, that's.
Yeah, and so when I first thought.
It's not quite my question. Um. When, I guess, you know, who knows the answer, when Thomaston has the Shellfish Ward, the the does that person get the same benefits and hours that we're specifying here in our policy? I think where I'm going is that um, if there's a new generation of uh of Select Board, um, and they dredge up this this policy or they they inherit the Shellfish Warden, um, I don't think we want them to have the same argument and discussion about what benefits, et cetera, that the person gets. They should just be given the answer. And the answer should be in this policy.
Yeah, and and from doing just a little bit of research on that, I believe that answer should be whatever the Shellfish Board determines. Because the town that acts as the administrator for those three years is simply kind of a pass through. And it's not necessarily a negative um on them. So if there's more benefits given to the Shellfish Warden than other employees, it's not going to negatively impact that town's finances because everything's done through the Shellfish people. And they get to determine it and the town's kind of like a pass through. So that's why I was saying, I don't even know if specific times, benefits, percentages, or any of that is even necessary because it's it's not even dictated by our personnel policy. And just simply referencing that the town has a Shellfish Warden and they're considered a department head and benefits are provided under determination or by determination from the Shellfish Regional Cooperative Board, I think would satisfy and then deleting all other stuff about the Shellfish Warden. So I would put Shellfish Warden under department heads. And then further on down, just simply reference that there's another group that provides this person benefits.
Another option would be just strike any reference to it and then amend it when and if it becomes our turn to hire him again.
Because I.
You know, the question, the first sentence says that while in the employ of the town of South Thomaston, when when we administer, is he actually one of our employees?
Yeah.
Well, and that's something I gotta say, I asked around and I got a couple of different answers. And the way that I tried to word it so it wasn't confusing was when the Shellfish Warden, if they got injured and they went in and displayed their health coverage, who does it say the employer is? And from some towns I heard it's the Georgia's River Shellfish Regional Cooperative. And from others, I've heard it's a town that's currently being the administrative agent for the cooperative.
It's the town who's the current employer. That's the whole reason they move around.
Yeah.
Because there's no, because they don't have any workers comp. They don't have any insurance.
They meaning the selfish.
They being the Shellfish Board. I mean, they're not, they're not um they're not an incorporated entity, for lack of a better word. They and and they would have to go out and buy workers comp and um you know. That's the whole reason they move around. I mean, when push comes to shove, if the Shellfish Warden get hurt, gets hurt, he's you know, he's on the workers comp of of whatever town he's working for.
That makes sense.
I mean, I I I don't know when it when I turn, I probably should since I'm on the board. I don't know when our turn is to have him again, but the easiest way to do this at this point, I'm I think might be just just to strike it completely and amend it when it comes back rather than trying to put something in and then trying to keep track of it.
So so we think it's wrong the way it is now?
I have no idea what his benefits are. I mean, for a time there, we contract, the Shellfish Board contracted with the county and he was an employee of the county.
Yeah.
Um, so I have no idea how this has migrated over time. My my suspicion is it's definitely probably different.
Here's just a thought and a suggestion. Um, there's a little bit of confusion and some wordsmithing that should go around with the Shellfish Warden. But I I think that vetting that concept through the Shellfish Board, if you guys aren't gonna be making substantive changes like to vote on today, which you're not, it's a workshop, we do have a little bit of time. It's a Shellfish Board wants to as the five towns, I'll talk about it and figure out what makes sense. They can then send to all five towns. Hey, this is maybe some language to reference our employee in your own personnel policies. And I actually initially thought, considering the specificity of what was in our personnel policy, that that's what was done. I couldn't imagine that we like came up with this extraordinarily specific language ourself. But to find that certain towns don't even reference the Shellfish Warden, yet we reference the exact health benefits policy that they get and the percentages that we pay and dental and all that stuff. It just seemed like this conversation around the Shellfish Warden should probably be done by that committee in all five towns and then them figuring out what they want to give for directive to the five towns to put in their personnel policies individually.
Okay, so you'll contact somebody about that.
Yeah, I'll I'll contact Danny Staples. I'll work with John on it as our as our representative. And I think, you know, where we're just trying to get this whole comprehensive big thing, we have a little bit of time. Let's see what the Shellfish Committee or the Shellfish Board spits out after they talk about it.
I you know, I I I feel like, Owen, you shouldn't spend a lot of time on this. I I I, you know, paid on employ him for three years. By that time, he may be a contract employee. I just feel like we're spinning wheels here a little bit. Um, you've got a lot of, you've got a lot of balls in the air right now. I don't think this is important at all.
No, and like I said, I, you know, I I brought this up to you all a little while ago. And um, no, I I completely agree. It was during my prep for this and trying to get you all good information to consider.
Yeah.
As you try to do it, this just unearthed, and so it seemed to be a slight two birds with one stone, but I I will say, yeah. It started to get pretty complicated.
And I think it, I think it, I think it's gonna get complicated. I strongly urge us just to strike everything and when he comes back, we'll deal with it at that time. If if and when she comes back.
Would.
Back to Article 4E, I don't really see any change to that. It's just basically.
What's that?
Do we want to make any changes to Article 4E where we're at? You want to strike that or because that talks about him working full time, 35 hours or more per week?
Yeah, I think we should strike, personally, I think we should strike any reference to it and just deal with it when and if that person comes back as a town employee. I just don't think we should spend a lot of time on this.
Okay.
Okay.
That's my thought.
No, I I'm in agreement. I think, you know, since there's too many unknowns here anyway, like you said, it could be a contract. And we've done it different ways. I'm not sure it needs to be in our employee manual at all. And if it is, we could do it as a appendix to our employee manual specific to that period of time.
Yeah, okay. That's what I would say.
So it's strike paragraph E.
I I, you know, to send Owen on this, I mean, you know, Danny, um, you know, this will get immensely complicated. I can guarantee.
The last thing that I'll say on the Shellfish Warden is on the following Article Five under Department Head Duties, um, it does say these are the following personnel for your department heads. Is that an appropriate place to just reference the Georgia's River Shellfish Warden?
No, I would strike any reference to it, any reference to it, just strike it.
Okay. Contractor, he might not be a department. I'm not sure why he needs to be at the department anyway.
Right. And and I feel like we've already spent too much time on this.
It's not in there now under department heading.
Can I jump back up to C for a second? Um. I didn't realize this before, but um it strikes me that that this is employee classifications and it this sort of is policy in the sense that it says may employ personnel. Does that need to be reworked a little bit? I mean, this is more supposedly more of a definition.
Rather than a.
Rather than a, you may employ them.
Isn't it defining per diem employees?
Yeah, I mean, I I guess what I'm very conscious of is I want to make sure it's very clear that the per diem employees do not qualify as full-time employees and then all of a sudden become eligible for health insurance. Because some of them do work um, more than 30 hours on a continuing basis. It it seems to me. um, more than thirty hours on a continuing basis, it, it seems to me lately. I mean, when they first started, you know, they didn't work weekends, they didn't work, you know. It was just six to six, Monday through Friday, no holidays. And, um, so I just, I just, it just strikes me, maybe we should more clearly define what the per diem employee is. I don't have a, I don't have a wordsmith for it, but.
Yeah, that makes sense on both scores, John, that we define, we get a definition of what a per diem is, and we strike the reference to, uh, the ambulance's practice.
Okay, got it.
Administrative assistant in Article five should be changed to town administrator.
Uh, where are you?
Right, the opening.
Yes, yeah, not the administrative assistant is a different job category. Our job.
Yeah, that was, the title was changed several years ago.
Jan, there's a special place in heaven for you for doing this work.
Okay, got it.
Uh, in E, it says they'll submit annual reports. Um, don't we typically go for monthly reports?
Yeah, I think the annual report refers to that which goes into the town report, I think.
Oh, okay. Well, no biggie, I mean.
We could specify that she'll submit an annual report for the town report. You can even, shall is pretty strong, too. We can even say may. I mean, it's not all the department heads are submitting a end-of-year report.
They, they, they do. That's one of the few, like, you know, monthly, we don't really get much from, let's say, the animal control officer, historically we haven't. But annually, there is a report for all department heads to go into the annual report.
Oh, send me Jerry's, will you? I'll see that one.
I think, um, Article six needs to be bumped up against Amy's SOPs, too. For example, it says no employee shall engage in any business other than their regular duties during work hours. I think in her SOPs, there's something about you can run errands or something if it doesn't interfere with your.
Yeah, I think, I think any business, I think she means like business. In other words, don't be selling Amway while you're on.
But I still, I don't think, bump this whole section up against that. Because she does have a discussion about, you know, conduct and how it reflects upon the town and, you know. I think there's quite a bit in those SOPs that are sort of related to this article.
Yep. Okay.
Owen, are we still on a Sunday to Saturday?
What's the question?
Are we still on a Sunday to Saturday work week? That's how the work week is defined, still?
Phil, are we on a Sunday to Saturday work week? Yes.
Okay. We don't pay, our, I think we need to update the language on how we're paying people. Don't, because don't we pay people every two weeks now?
Yes.
And this says they'll be played, paid every Monday for the previous week.
We still do it on Mondays, but it's every other week.
Right, well, this says they're going to be paid Monday for the previous week, which implies that, to me, that it's weekly.
So employees are paid every two weeks now, that we said?
Yes.
Do they, they actually get their checks on Monday?
Um, hard copy checks get printed on Monday, direct deposits don't hit until the following day, Tuesday. So everything's done on a Monday. If you're here, you can pick up your check. If it's direct deposit, you'll get it the next day. Unless it's a holiday.
I would just put in here that they're paid every two weeks.
I think bi-weekly covers it, right?
Are there some quarterlies, Owen?
Yes, and I was kind of thinking about that. I mean, the accepting firefighters who are paid in accordance with state guidelines. We pay our firefighters quarterly. You all get paid quarterly.
Oh, it's, it's there, okay.
Yeah, the, there's actually a provision, there's a law that allows firefighters to be paid, not weekly. I mean, not every, um, with, with wager, and you cannot, you gotta pay them within sixteen days or something of their pay, of their workday or something like that. And there's a law that specifically exempts firefighters from that. Which they wanted, firefighters around the state. They didn't want to get little checks.
And, um, I'm sorry for interrupting, not for right now, but, um, I did send Phil our equal opportunity language and asked him to look into the current language. So when wordsmithing over time in your inboxes, you have the current equal opportunity language.
Okay, how are you?
Owen, what time does Anna go to lunch?
Around noon.
Could you ask her to get on the call for a second?
Sure.
I'm sorry, the coffee thing, do you know what I forgot to do?
Um, can you give us a minute? She's right in the middle of something, but I'll have her come join on when she's available.
Owen, are those holidays up, correct?
You have to change the name of Columbus Day.
Yeah, all right, um, that's another, I mean, I can check that, see if there's been, for whatever reason, some sort of expansion. Um, my understanding is we just follow any of the federal and local ones, like Patriots' Day being a bit of a local one. Um, but the remainder are all just federal holidays.
The day following Thanksgiving?
No, the, the day following Thanksgiving is not a federal holiday.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, is that what we're currently doing, was my question?
Um, what we're currently doing is typically on a case-by-case basis, primarily because certain holidays will fall differently, uh, different times throughout the year. So sometimes a holiday falls on an actual day that we're closed. So we have to figure out how the individual, whether they just get paid for that day, whether they're going to take a different day. Um, we look at.
Yeah, I, I understand that. That, that's in the next line. My question is, are those the holidays we're paying people for?
Yes.
Okay.
We are paying for that Friday after Thanksgiving, even though we're not open.
Yes.
Yeah, we have been for quite a while, and I think that's because we used to be open five days.
Did you want to talk with Anna now?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Hi, Anna, how are you?
I'm good, how are you guys?
Happy New Year. I just love, you're, you're getting an awful lot of positive feedback.
Oh, thank you.
Know that, and, uh, we appreciate it, and I think the customers do, so keep it up.
Oh, thank you very much, guys.
Okay.
You want Owen back now?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry for the interruption, but it was fresh in my mind.
Always good to praise in public. Okay, where are we? We gentlemen holidays?
Yeah, I think so. Um, well, I did have one question for Owen. Are you back, Owen?
Yes.
Under C, um, is Dana still the only person who falls into that category?
I don't even think Dana's part-time.
Dana is.
He's part-time.
He's part-time, because there's a part-time employee who works less than normal thirty hours per week on a continuing basis. So he's a part-time employee under the definition of classification. So I'm, my question is, is he the only one who is he still the only one who falls under that category?
Yes, I mean, on a continuous basis, I guess, is the defining term.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that was put in there specifically for him. Because sometimes he'll work on a holiday. If it, say, something comes on a Wednesday, you know, he might work it, and then he gets paid for that holiday.
Where are you, John? I don't see the words on a continuous basis.
I wasn't.
If, it says, it's under C, if you go back to part-time, how part-time employee is classified, it's, that's where the continuous basis is.
Okay. I was gonna say, I didn't see it in C.
But I can't think of anybody else who meets that. Is he getting his pay for his three holidays?
No, but I don't, he's, he's, if we do just the stump-dump hours, he's fourteen hours a week. He's not.
That's right. A part-time employee who works less than the normal thirty hours on a continuing basis. I, I agree with you. So he should be getting three holidays a year.
Part-time employees who work less than an average of fifteen hours a week, temporary employees and per diem employees are not entitled to holiday benefits. That's what I'm reading in part D.
Right, but he's more than fifteen, right?
No, the stump-dump is open twice a week, from nine till four, that's seven hours per day, that's fourteen hours per week.
Oh, so he dropped below that, okay.
I believe that was deliberative. I'm not, I mean, I, I wasn't around when that happened, but I believe that was a deliberative move to keep him below of, of even a part-time employee classification. I mean, it just seems.
Okay, all right. I, you know what? I think what happened is I think the stump-dump used to be open three days a week.
Yeah, I mean, he's still, he still gets workers' comp and things like.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
No, no health benefits from us, he gets no paid vacation from us.
Okay.
I mean, that, that could change, but that's an operational thing. You know, if you all wanted to expand the hours of the stump-dump, you don't have to change anything in this policy, but if you expanded it, he would cross that fifteen hours a week threshold and become a part-time employee and would now be eligible for, for expanded benefits.
Well, I'll, you know, I suggest let sleeping dogs live, and originally that was put in there for his, his, his benefit.
I think we're gonna have to do something about it, because the way it reads in C, it says part-time employees after one year shall be paid three.
He doesn't meet that classification.
But he doesn't qualify as part-time.
What is he then?
He qualifies as hourly, he's an hourly employee.
Yeah. You're right, he sort of falls into an abyss if you look at the classifications. He doesn't meet any of them.
Yeah, I can see, we don't have hourly employee up there under, under employee classification.
Yeah, there's only five, and he doesn't meet any of those five. Interesting.
I mean, in, just something to think on, I don't think that we're going to solve this problem right now, but going into this upcoming budget, if there is a desire to, um, expand slightly the hours of the stump-dump, um, Dana would be the attendant that would do that. But I just, you know, we would want to know that prior to budget season, because we would need to start doing health benefits and a lot of other changes for that budget.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not thinking that at all.
Are we on to vacation?
I don't have any issues with that at all.
There was, we, some of the language in here around, shoot, let me find it again. Anyway, there's the probationary period and the six-month probationary period before you start getting and accruing things. Um, the question for us was, do you accrue nothing in those first six months? And then your accrual date is actually six months after your hire date, or upon six months of successful completion and leaving the probationary period, do you get afforded the six-month worth of benefits that you accrued prior to that? And your kind of annual recharge of vacation is based on your hire date versus your six-month probationary date? Because that, that kind of fiddles with our system a little bit, and we don't really know, you say Phil, for example, when does Phil get another charge up of vacation? Is it the, the, um, the anniversary of his hire or the anniversary of six months after that? And then also.
That doesn't B address that?
That is the probationary period. After six months, two weeks per year, from the end of the probationary period.
Oh.
That strikes me as pretty specific, pretty clear. But you're saying there's trouble interpreting that, Owen, or?
Yes, and I'm trying to see if I could, uh, find where that. But Phil and I had it figured out the other day, and now I apparently got myself backwards. Okay, um, all the way back up near employment Article two. Um, all employees are considered probationary for the first six months of employment. Probationary period shall be considered an extension of the selection process. They may be removed. Um, I'll, I'll find it later and let you all know, but there there was a passage that made us confused as we were trying to do, um, you know, what, what vacation I'm getting to the end of my time, and so I was curious, what do I have remaining for vacation? And so Phil and I talked about the difference between salaried employees, how do they accrue? Um, hourly employees, how do they accrue? And I don't know why I can't find it now, but there was a passage about the, the six-month probationary period. And we couldn't determine whether or not, like, what is the recharge date on that?
Oh, you're saying somewhere else in here, there's a conflict with B?
Vacation. So Article A, vacation privileges are available to full and part-time employees subject to following conditions. Employee cannot be in a probationary period or a temporary position. So if they're in that six-month probationary period, are they not accruing any of these benefits?
What do you mean by these benefits? Are we talking about vacation?
Yes. So after.
That's how I read it, but.
Yeah, I think the intent is that you can't take vacation during the first six months while you're on probation.
I guess I don't understand without seeing the other caught the language that you say is contrary, I guess I don't understand the issue.
So after six months, two weeks per year from the end of the probationary period.
Yeah.
Do the vacation benefits start accruing at the end of the probationary period? Or had they accrued in the six months? Because in our system, you have to put like a date, an actual date for benefits and then because everyone has a different hire date, and so people will accrue on different rates.
Right. Let me let me try to ask the question a little differently, Owen. I think what you're asking is when you clear the probationary period, does your six-month calendar go revert back to your hire date? And as importantly, when you get to the next year, does your accrual start on your the anniversary of your hired date? Or does it start on the anniversary of the end of your probation period?
Thank you. Yes. And it makes sense. If you get right to to six months, you're not satisfied with the employee and you separate. You know, they shouldn't walk away doing like a vacation buyout. But when they hit month seven.
They should have gotten credit for six months.
Right.
In my opinion.
What do we? I want to know what have we been doing for the past ten years?
I'm not really sure you want me to answer that question.
I I thought we were we were um I thought we were doing it at the end of the probationary period. That was your start date for starting to accrue vacation, but do we not know?
Well, and that was one of the things is, you know, this is it's one of Phil's tasks to manage that. And you know, from him and I talking it out, we don't believe that there's been recently anyway, very clear guidance or interpretation of the personnel policy for him to fully determine. And so as we've looked it out and kind of called over to other towns too, to try to figure out how it was also based on the the leave stuff, the new law change.
Yeah.
We're we're really trying to understand our system better and make sure that the system is doing the work instead of the human doing the work. And so that facilitated, what's my start date? Is it the, you know, is the anniversary after probation? When do I get those first six months?
Well, again, Phil Phil must know what we've been doing. He's been there for six years.
Yeah, but also think about it this way. The only people that really get this are the three people in this office.
Right.
And so we can kind of just, as long as everyone's comfortable that we're not doing, you know, taking more benefits than is due, we just do it. But no, we don't. I mean.
Do what?
We just take what, you know, we end up having to do kind of mathematics every time someone wants to take vacation. Because our system doesn't track it overly well, and there's the difference between the the per hour folks up front and then me as salaried. You know, like when you enter the number one, that's one day for me, but that's eight and a half hours for them. It just got a little confusing, and we we just don't feel that we have great guidance. And then you can break it into all kinds of different questions, but I think one of the first questions is the anniversary date. Is the anniversary date of accruing the benefits on hire date or the probation date?
Well, again, I I want to ask the question, what have we been doing the last six years? I mean, that's we we know, right? I mean, obviously.
Right. So when 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 do you fill in um Chelsea um when when were you accruing vacation? Well, on what date? And did that date match with your probationary period or your date of hire? I I don't think you have to go and track every single one of them. You just have to take a sample and say, here's what we've been doing.
Yeah, I'll um I'll get you some guidance on that.
Then we can decide whether we want to change that.
Right.
Because clearly, the way it's written to me, you don't accrue any leave benefit until after six months. And and that's designed so that if you leave prior to six months, you don't pay out leave. And you don't leave with a check for your vacation time.
Right.
However, I think Walter's point about, okay, you make the six months. Now you're in month seven. Have you earned that first six months worth of leave time? And and we would have to clarify that in our policy if we're going to do that.
And I'm not necessarily I'm not necessarily opposed to making that clear and changing it so it reads that way, but I just want to know what we've been doing.
Right, I think that's the precedence is important. But I'm saying that right now, I would say you don't get any leave for your first six months. You don't accrue any. It starts afterwards. But if we want to do that, and I would not be opposed to that either for someone who stays on beyond the probationary period, we need to clarify that in here.
Is that it on vacation?
It for me.
Yep. Let's do a time check and see who's got a hard stop.
Those ten after twelve. I'm okay. I mean, I'm not.
Email.
I can I can go another half hour or so.
Yeah, I'm kind of like a twelve thirty.
All right. We're making good progress, though.
Yeah, and Phil and I just chatted out. You'll end up getting an email from us explaining how we're accounting for these things specifically. But then we'll also raise any of the additional confusions that we found by going through that process.
Okay, all right, we're on to sick leave.
There was another question that was raised. Um, so item B does say that they're eligible for sick leave after thirty days of employment. That falls within the probationary time period. Is that a discrepancy or is that okay? Because sickly, I don't know necessarily enough about law around vacation, sick leave, and the nuances there. Are we required to provide sick leave sooner and within the probationary period or or not? I just don't know the answer to that.
I I don't think sick leave. I I do think we need to look at that new leave law in relation to that question. I mean, I don't think we're required to leave, provide sick leave at all, and we only do it to three people. But I think there's a difference between sick leave during the vacation during your probationary period and vacation. I mean, if you're if you're, you know, you've been working there five months and you're sick. You 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 don't particularly nowadays, you don't want to encourage incentivize people to come in.
As a matter of fact, how much more sick leave can we give you? Stay away for fourteen days. Yeah, I think the 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 key here is is the new leave law. Because that might start on day one regardless of what our probationary period is.
Right, but that's not necessarily for sick.
No, it's it's could be, but yeah.
Could be, right. And actually, I think our with our with the possible exception of the day one start, that leave law is not going to affect the three and the three positions in the front office, because I think we're well above the the requirement. It's everybody else that affects.
One, I'm sorry for going backwards, but I was trying to refresh my memory. So on this sick leave that we're currently looking at, you'll see F and G about sick leave accumulating thirty days will be lost. And then the end of G accumulated sick leave shall under no circumstances be paid to an employee upon termination. My understanding is going up to Article ten for vacation. State statute allows for buyout of vacation that is not utilized, but our policy doesn't speak to that at all. And just didn't know if you wanted, you know, for folks that accrue vacation and then retire or separate somehow. Do you want to specify remaining vacation? Because either folks will probably end up just using it all before they leave. If you had a policy that said it can be bought out, what I've seen in other towns is they'll let you buy out, but the town saves a little bit of money because it's like a lump sum. They'll say, we'll pay eighty percent of what it would have been because you never used them. And now we we don't want you to just not be at work for the next two weeks. You can buy out from all that, but we're just not going to give you full rate. Are those things that you wanted to consider putting in under vacation? Because it's just, again, in sick leave, it specifically says you cannot buy these out. But there is no reference on buyout or not on the vacation days.
My opinion is you you own vacation time and you're entitled to it. Sick leave, you're entitled to it only if you're sick. That's my opinion, which is why you can't. You don't walk away with your sick time.
Right, but I agree. I I agree that we have a we have a cap on on vacation buildup, yes? I thought I read I've read that.
Yeah, we do. Certain amount can be carried over without approval.
Okay, so I I would.
My my feeling would be that's but be bought out at a hundred percent.
Yeah, I I agree. I own your vacation time, and sometimes people don't get to take it through the fault of the town or the employer, not the employee.
And a hundred percent is fine. That's completely up to you all. I have seen another town specific to a buyout, just very similar to what I've done with the health benefits. You know, we're all kind of doing each other a solid here, and you can buy out, as she said, a slightly lower rate. I've typically seen around eighty percent buyout, but a hundred percent is however you want to do it.
If you look, I think I think you own it.
Look at Article ten, paragraph G. But the last sentence says vacation time over five days, not taken within that year, will be lost.
Yeah, and that's for like, you know, Phil stays on for the next fifteen years. You know, he's gonna like start accruing. He's got to manage and and figure out those five days that he doesn't want to lose. Maybe he's taking it at the end of the year. The question is more specific to to buy out like upon completion or termination or when you separate from the town, not an ongoing annual employee.
I know, but I guess my my take on that is that the only possible amount of buying back would be five days.
Well, no, because you could you could have accrued up to after twenty years, you could accrue up to five weeks and not taken any of that during that year. So you could theoretically have five weeks.
Not according to our policy. Read read paragraph.
No, that's only if that's only if the if you cross the end of the year. So for example, on December twenty eighth, if you haven't taken any vacation time, you haven't yet crossed the year, you would have, and you left that day, you would have five weeks.
Right.
But also, don't don't tie this to an actual year. This is tied to the hire date from the employee.
Wow, okay.
Yeah. Read paragraph G, John. Employees should plan to take their vacation, do them within the year time is earned. Employed, be carry up to five days of vacation time without approval by the board. Employees are encouraged to take their vacation time. Again, same thing. Special exceptions can be made by the board. Now, this is where that may be covered. Then it says vacation time over five days, not taken within that year, is lost. The way I read that, the most vacation time you can accrue is five days and carry it from year to year.
From year to year. That's that's true. But John's point is that within the year, if if you're entitled to five weeks, and going back to our discussion about buyout, and you leave before the end of the year, but after you've accrued your full five weeks, the question is, do we that then have to pay you for the five weeks?
Okay, I get what you're saying there.
So not caring. Sorry, Jim, I didn't. I'm talking over you.
No, I'm sorry. I was talking over you, but I think I get it now. So you're talking about in the same year, John. So you're not going. You're not going to say, well, gee, I get five weeks this year. I don't take it. I get five weeks next year. Now I got ten weeks, and I decided to go home. Okay, so all we're carrying over from year to year is the five days. But during the year, you'd sell back whatever you've accrued that year, plus plus five days possibly from the previous.
But in real, but in reality, I think if if, you know, say we had a staff shortage and somebody was dedicated and they couldn't take their vacation time because, you know, we only had, you know, we we're missing at the front desk, and they're going to come to us and say, geez, I can't take my vacation. Oh, we're gonna have to close the office. We're gonna let them carry it over.
That's where special exceptions can be made.
Right, but but my point is, we're gonna do that probably, so.
I would think so. Okay, I got it. So the real question is, as Owen has proposed, do we want to allow for the sellback of accumulated vacation time?
And I apologize that I don't have potential statute at my fingers. I've only, like I said, I've heard it referenced that that the vacation is kind of spoken to in statutory language, so maybe that's why it's silent here and that when towns are speaking to it specifically, they're authorizing their home rule and saying that's fine, but we're just not going to do it at the same rate. So I don't have that statutory language, but if you just wanted to give some sort of guidance on that buyout, we have the discretion to do what we want here.
Well, I think we're in agreement that that people are entitled to their vacation time when they leave, if and when they leave, so.
I can add that in.
Yeah.
Under Article ten.
Okay.
All right.
The health the health insurance, obviously.
This is probably where we need to add the 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 leave. The new leave law. Somewhere in around because we're talking about leaves here, vacation, sick leave.
Um, could I just offer a suggestion? So one thing that I've kind of seen work out well, and there's examples that we actually just below the health insurance. You know, there's this number based on one thousand five dollars from two thousand and eight. Putting very specific things into a personnel policy can lead to constant amendment of it. So if we're going to reference the leave law or just as we work through this document in general, if these items that we're referencing are discussed in specificity in a different separate document by the state or by the feds or whoever, I just think that would be smart for us to reference those documents because those are going to be ongoing. The state legislature might change a law. And so for us to be reactionary and constantly amending our personnel policy based on what other people are doing, we could instead just simply reference, there's a leave time law under state statute, we follow that law. And then you can kind of leave it there, and then whatever they do with the leave law won't facilitate an amendment change on our part. So being vague on some of these things that are spoken to very specifically in a different document is something I would just recommend we think about.
Okay, the question, though, is where do we put the leave law reference?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I just wanted to while we're doing it, flopping in vague language is.
I I'd like to think about that a little bit. I intended to be a sort of a manual for employees. And I I hate to send employees chasing down state laws.
Yeah, I'd like to see how long it is and how in depth it is and see if we could.
Yeah, I I guess I have mixed feelings about that. This is a this is all. It's a personnel policy, but it's also sort of an employee handbook. I know it isn't labeled as such, but. I know it isn't labeled as such, but.
As far as where it would go, I would say that it would go right here at the end of this, uh, leave, you know, you'd insert it before article 12. As a new article.
Yeah, that was, that was my thought as well. It's to be a standalone.
Yep. But I haven't seen it yet either, so I'd be interested to see it before we make that determination.
Well, the other, the other place it could go, I was thinking with, then you wouldn't have to change the articles, was you could re-artikel, um, 13 is bereavement and lease of absences, you could maybe change that title and work it in there. That was the other thought I had, and that wouldn't, then you wouldn't have to go changing all the articles. That's sort of a little catch-all.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we could, again, when I see the policy, it might fit there naturally, but.
Yeah.
Yep, I hear what you're saying.
So it's now.
All right, listen, folks, I have just been, I have just been summoned to my hard stop, I apologize.
Okay. Where we just made the change. I did have some further recommendations in there, but we can stop now.
What was that, Jan?
We, we've completed up to page five, the article 12 of health insurance, which is the article that was recently changed, amended. And, you know, I can go in and start entering those amendments into the document that we've worked on here. Give us a straw man at least, to reflect what we've done so far.
So we're gonna stop at health insurance, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes.
All right. We have, we have to adjourn, you wanna motion to it, are we?
Unless you guys, unless you guys wanna continue.
Huh?
Unless you wanna continue, but I would suggest we adjourn.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we wanna go without you, Walter. I think this would be a, in order to be a work, workable workshop, we all should be having input to it.
Do we wanna schedule another meeting to take this up again? So I'm afraid if we wait until the next meeting and then it's gonna be.
Yeah, uh, cause we, um, again, when are you leaving, John?
Um, I'm leaving, with weather permitting, I'm leaving early Thursday morning, a week from today.
Oh, so can we do this remotely? Well, obviously we're doing it remotely now. You wanna do it?
Yeah, um, yeah, I, um, probably, um, I'm hoping to get there Saturday, so, you know, maybe like Tuesday of the following week, I don't even know when that is.
Nineteenth.
It's the Tuesday, the 19th.
That'll work for me, that day's open for me.
It's Tuesday, yeah, Tuesday, the 19th works for me too.
10 a.m.
Sure. You're gonna still be in the eastern time zone, yes, John?
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good.
You know, I think we made a lot of progress.
Yeah.
And thank you all, and I apologize for this big time second beginning and, uh, Mike's confusion on getting this policy, so thank you all very much.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
No, if it's a reregistration.
I, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, John?
Hi.
Jan?
Hi.
Walter, hi, thank you guys.
Hi.
Have a good weekend.
Same to you.